Welcome everyone this evening. For those who are in attendance tonight, if you wish to speak during citizen comment period, please do so by signing on the sheet in the back of chambers. And before we get started, Terry, would you like to make the announcement?
Yeah, I feel like it's a like a store clerk or something, but somebody has got a blue Chrysler SUV out in the parking lot that has their lights on, their interior lights on, so just heads up.
Thank you. And Mr. Wood, would you lead us in the pledge?
I would. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is the adoption of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes four to zero. Item four is matters from mayor. Mr. Lee and I attended the prayer vigil over the weekend on Saturday at the YMCA, and it was so encouraging to see the community come together in solidarity. I'm reminded that Waynesboro is marked more by people who care about others and their community than those who spread division and hate. It was a beautiful event. Item five is matters from council members. Does anybody have anything?
I have just one. There is going to be an opening on the Economic Development Authority, and so if anybody's interested in that, I think you submit a letter of interest to the council clerk.
Yes. Thank you so much. Anybody else?
No.
Okay. Item six is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes four to zero. Moving on along. Item seven is to proclaim February as Black History Month in the city of Waynesboro. Mr. Lee, would you please read the proclamation?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas Dr. Carter Goodwin Woodson, distinguished African-American author, editor, scholar, and historian, who is known as the father of black history, founded the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History in September 1915 and launched Negro History Month in 1926. And whereas since 1976, every American president has proclaimed February as Black History Month. And whereas the theme of this year's celebration is Black Resistance Established by the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. And whereas this year's theme explores how African-Americans have resisted historic and ongoing oppression in all forms, especially with racism, criminal justice, and economic inequality. Therefore, be it resolved that Mayor of Waynesboro, Virginia, on behalf of the City Council, takes great pleasure in recognizing February 2023 as Black History Month and urges all citizens to join in celebrating the accomplishments of African-Americans during Black History Month and encourages the people of Waynesboro to recognize the many talents, achievements, and contributions that African-Americans make to their communities. And be it further resolved that the clerk of the council transmit a copy of this proclamation to the curator of the African-American History Museum, Waynesboro, Virginia, for appropriate distribution. In witness whereof, I here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Waynesboro to be affixed this 23rd day of January 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Is there a motion to proclaim February Black History Month in Waynesboro?
I'll make that motion.
And thank you, Mr. Wood. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to invite Ms. Estelo Randolph forward to receive this proclamation and make any remarks.
Thank you so much. I did it. Okay. Very good. Thank you. Well, I'm Estelo Randolph, and I live at 452 Port Republic Road here in the beautiful city of Waynesboro. I've been here 25 years, and I'm telling you, I love this city. And I just wanted to just thank everyone. I wanted to thank the Captain Shaw for his helping us with the Martin Luther King March and his officers. It was Officer Collins and Officer Terrell, and we had just a little hiccup, but they came through in flying colors, helping us cross from the city building, across Broad Street, and going up Port Republic Road. So I want to say to the city of Waynesboro, we are so pleased to be part of the growth here and that we are open for appointments Monday through Friday and in the evening on Wednesdays and Thursdays from 6:00 to 8:00. So please come by to Rosenwall and see the Black Heritage Museum. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Item eight is to consider approving an Economic Development Performance Agreement among the city of Waynesboro Crush Operations LLC, doing business as Commonwealth Crush and the Economic Development Authority of Waynesboro. I'd like to call on Greg Hitchens, the Director of Economic Development and Tourism.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. Commonwealth Crush is a custom crush winery processing facility operating approximately 17,000 square feet of the former Virginia Metal Crafters Building. They are a new business in Waynesboro, and in fact, this business model is the first of its kind on the East Coast. Since they use Virginia agricultural products in their process, they are eligible to apply for and receive a Governor's Agricultural and Forestry Industries Development Fund grant, commonly known as AFID grant. AFID is a state discretionary incentive based on the value of agricultural products, capital investment, and jobs. The state determines the value of the incentive, and a locality provides a match. Since 2021, staff has been working with Commonwealth Crush to locate their facility in Waynesboro. And early 2022, after a preliminary application and incentive offer from AFID, in consultation with the City Council and the EDA, the city made formal application to the Commonwealth for a $25,000 AFID grant and a required local match of $25,000 from the city. The grant period is three years, with the company committing to add value to over $1 million worth of Virginia grapes, invest more than $1.5 million in the building and equipment, and provide six new jobs. The city investment of $25,000 will be a reimbursement of taxes and fees paid by Commonwealth Crush over those three years. There is no cash outlay by the city. Each AFID grant requires a performance agreement with required clawback provisions between the applicant and the business detailing their private investment, jobs, and value of the agricultural products. Procedurally, on execution of the performance agreement, the city will request the state grant of $25,000, and upon receipt, pass it through the EDA to the company. To receive city funds, Commonwealth Crush must pay the taxes and fees due as regular businesses do, then request reimbursement. This will be done annually for the previous calendar year for the three years of the agreement. In late summer 2022, the grant application was approved by the Commonwealth, and in October of 2022, the governor announced the award of the grant. At their January 13, 2023, irregular meeting, the EDA unanimously approved and executed the performance agreement. We're asking tonight for an introduction of the ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute the performance agreement as included in your packet. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Does anyone have any questions from Mr. Hitchens? No?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution approving the performance agreement?
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Short. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes four to zero. And item nine is a presentation of the Planning Commission's 2023 annual report, and I would like to call on Shannon Boyle, Chair of the Planning Commission.
Good evening, council. You're not going to have slides for me. There's more stress than I need in my life. I can't, I'm a tactile learner. But you have this lovely backdrop for me. We had a great year of Planning Commission busy, as usual. We had personnel changes and staff and changes on the commission, but we have great chemistry right now, super forward-thinking, and a dedicated team working on all issues that come before us. Throughout the year, we've, in development applications, we've had conditional use permits, rezoning, text amendments, three major subdivision preliminary plots, and residential development. We've had three new subdivisions totaling 172 single-family residences. Continued construction is in two subdivisions, is 34 single-family homes and 40 different villas. Residential permits are down a little bit, but they still remain strong, definitely to the good side of what they've been in the past. The Port Republic Road Historic Women Community Association moved forward with event planning and objectives. We're really excited about all the work that's been poured into a very important part of our community. The brownfield grants and the environmental assessments have moved forward, and we're looking forward to Phase Two, especially for the site of the Natural History Museum. Staff has worked tirelessly on DOT grants, three SMARTS scale grants, including what I'm most excited about because it's where I live, a roundabout at Roser Main and Broad, improvements at the I-64 off-ramp at Exit 94, and hopefully the Croze Connell Trail. Also, the Virginia Highway Safety Improvement Program. We've requested grant funds for 44 different improvements to stoplight visibility, pedestrian crossings, left turn, and left turn yellow arrows, and we've participated in lots of regional planning activities and made vast improvements to our GIS program. And I have to say that I've been on Planning Commission kind of a longish time, six years, and you all should come to our meetings. We really, our city is blessed to have thoughtful and hard-working commissioners and staff who really do a lot of the legwork to keep things flowing around here. So enjoy the fruits of our hard work.
Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
No. I think it's a good reminder. Thank you so much for all that you do and what our Planning Commission does. I've got to get off of YouTube and come to a meeting. But appreciate all that you do, and thank you so much.
There's a lot of us, there's a lot of moving parts, but thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, this presentation was informational only, and so no action is required by City Council.
Ms. Mayor, I might, I think Ms. Tate has a more extensive presentation of the commission's work before we move to the next thing. I apologize that that wasn't quite clear in the program.
So I wanted to thank Shannon so much for sharing all of the hard work that the city's Planning Commission did undertake in 2022. And so we look to the past as an extremely helpful tool as we benchmark and assess trends in development and then our progress in meeting the goals and objectives that are really set forth in the city's comprehensive plan. So I am going to go through just a couple kind of important items in the annual report, but then also wanted to kind of speak a little bit at the end about, you know, what we're looking forward to in the years to come. I wanted, so this map kind of goes through the various development applications that this Planning Commission reviewed this year. So the blue show conditional use permit applications, the red Xs are rezoning applications, and then the green Xs represent those preliminary plots that were approved by the Planning Commission this year. So you can see kind of how they're spread out throughout the city. This map is really good in showing what those three kind of new approved preliminary plots are, as well as existing approved prior to 2022 residential developments that are still continuing to develop within the city. And this is probably what, you know, citizens are maybe most interested in, and you also. So this shows new residential building permits. And so you can see that we had, we have been increasing pretty drastically since the fall in 2018. But this year, in 2022, permits did see roughly an 11% decrease over 2021. It's still too early, obviously, in 2023 for us to kind of see, but it might be worth doing kind of a mid-year check-in to see kind of where we are over the previous year. Still strong, certainly, but we are seeing a little bit of, last year saw a little bit of a decrease in new residential building permits. The Port Republic Road Neighborhood Plan that was adopted by council has got a lot of great action items that staff will continue to work on as we develop budget requests and things that come forward, either through the Community Development Block Grant Program or other programming in the city. Just highlighting on the SMARTS scale applications, the recommended funding scenario has included the main Broad and Roser Roundabout, so that's not finalized yet by the CTP, but that one did rise to the top in the scoring that was recently completed. This is also interesting to note that staff applied for a planning grant for a bike citywide bicycle pedestrian plan. We were supposed to hear back on January 13. Did receive notice that they were taking a little longer to kind of wrap that up, so we're not sure if we've gotten that yet, but that'll be exciting news if we do receive funding for that planning process. A regional housing study was kicked off by the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission. It's a two-year program, and the first year is really focused on data collection. It will be a plan that provides detailed information about the status of housing in the region, but it's also supposed to include locality-specific recommendations for housing. The program has been a great learning opportunity for staff. They have hosted, you know, close to 10 webinars that have given us a lot of great data and information through the Virginia Tech Housing Center that does this work. One other important thing to note that's kind of a future action is the SAAL MPO, so the Stanton Augusta Waynesboro Metropolitan Planning Organization, is going through kind of a regional intersection study, and every locality that makes up that body is allowed kind of two intersections for further study. So we looked at intersections within the city that kind of rose to the top as having some safety concerns, and they were intersections that had not yet received any kind of planning assessment. And so those two are Delphine Avenue at Windsor Road and then Delphine Avenue at the I-64 Exit 96 westbound exit and entrance ramps. So we will be working with the MPO on a study to kind of review those areas and what might be some possible solutions. This just shows those two locations. Okay, so that was kind of, you know, the wrap-up of, in addition to what Shannon said, all the great things that the Planning Commission did in 2022. But really, we're kind of looking at how we have met those objectives that have been identified in the comprehensive plan. You know, do we see these development trends continuing? And then what are some important planning opportunities and development projects that we're going to see progress or come to completion, hopefully, in 2023? So I wanted to share a few. So the city's comprehensive plan was last adopted in 2018, and the Virginia State Code does require that that plan for a locality be reviewed every five years. So we will be looking at what have we accomplished since that plan was adopted in 2018? What are some things that we're still working to accomplish from that plan? Do those goals and objectives still serve us? Are there new goals, objectives, and programs that we should turn our focus to? And then certainly, staff has talked about the land use plan that kind of dates back to 2008, and with a citywide possible bicycle and pedestrian planning process, it would probably be a good time to review that future land use map as well. So those are some important things that we will be looking at in the next year. We're still pursuing grant funds to construct the trail from Waynesboro to the Croze Tunnel. Unfortunately, it has not scored well in the SMARTS scale funding pool, but staff continues to look for other programs and options for that project, and it's still very much a priority from the comprehensive plan. Also, the East Main Streetscape project that was approved in a prior round of SMARTS scale that would include street trees and pedestrian connectivity, and it's an important quality of life project from the 2018 comprehensive plan. The city in VDOT, we've executed all required documents, and VDOT has requested that the preliminary engineering phase be open. So once that happens, staff will be able to continue moving that project forward. And again, that is a SMARTS scale funded project, so no city funds, but it will be a city-administered project. Another update, an exciting project that we'll see come to completion is the Greenway Phase Three, so an important sidewalk connection of the citywide Greenway Trail. Those plans have been submitted to VDOT for review, and the next steps will be to put out a bid for construction of that sidewalk connection. Staff's also looking forward to the round of TAP applications, which would include applications for pedestrian or greenway infrastructure. Those will open again this year, so as we think through some additional projects. And then lastly, the bike and pedestrian planning, depending on if we receive that grant opportunity, it could really coincide nicely with a comprehensive plan review and a land use map review. So with the 2022 annual report and looking back, it's also important to kind of see how far we've come in those benchmarks with the plan, because often those things that you're planning for, you're finally seeing them come to fruition in that five-year timeframe when we're revisiting the plan. So that's all I have. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? No? Again, this was informational only and no action is required. Thank you so much, Ms. Tate. Item 10 is to consider ratifying amendments to the Planning Commission bylaws, and I'll call on Ms. Tate again.
Okay, so this is really simple. You have the bylaws in front of you, so I'm not going to go through them in detail, but just highlight those specific amendments that we took to the Planning Commission at their meeting on the 17th, and they recommended approval of these amendments. So first is under Section 1.6, which talks about the duties of the Planning Commission. The amendments consider that the preparation and presentation of the annual report, so what you just heard, has been updated to reflect the calendar year. So rather than saying we would do that at the end of September, we've amended it to say no later than the end of January, so we can kind of round out a full year with the building permit data and the rezoning and development application data, and then present that and kind of have an consistent year cycle. In the same vein, the election of the chair and the vice chair in Section 2.2, it previously also ended the year in September, and this would have those election of officers to be done in January, every January. The next is Section 2.3 and 2.4, and this is just updating words to reflect current city positions. So with the transition and kind of the newly created Community Development Department, there were some wording changes that needed to be done to say, rather than Planning Director, that it's the City Planner, since we now have that kind of umbrella department. The next is Section 3.2, and that is special meetings. And this is updated to just very specifically match Virginia State Code requirements for how Planning Commissions can call special meetings. The State Code says that they can be called by a chair or by two members, as long as they provide written request to the chair. It talks about providing that meeting place and time within five days in advance unless all the Planning Commissioners kind of waive that advance requirement, and that it also notes that a Planning Commission can set a special meeting at a regularly scheduled meeting. All just important notifications to make sure that the public is aware of those meetings. The next is Section 3.3, which talks about cancellation or postponement of a meeting. The current bylaws say that a chair could cancel a meeting, and sometimes staff kind of initiates the cancellation of a meeting if there's nothing to be placed on the agenda. So we just wanted to add that, that staff, Planning Staff could communicate with the Planning Commission Chair, and that that kind of collaboration and communication could result in the cancellation of a meeting. And then the last is Section 4.28, general procedures. This is updated to include a step which allows the applicant to respond or kind of provide a rebuttal to public comments. That's how we run the meetings currently and have been running them, but in the structure of meetings that was laid out in the bylaws, that wasn't something that was specified. So there's no State Code requirement that City Council approve Planning Commission bylaws, or even that Planning Commissions have specific bylaws, but just kind of general rules of their meeting. But the current bylaws do say that the City Council will ratify amendments to the Planning Commission bylaws, so that is what we're requesting this evening, a motion and vote to ratify the amended Planning Commission bylaws. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Are there any questions regarding the bylaw changes?
Straightforward.
Okay. And do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Short. And do I have a second?
No second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes four to zero. Item 11 is to consider appointing an elected official to the Stanton Augusta County Waynesboro Metropolitan Planning Organization, the SAAL MPO Policy Board. Mr. Hamp?
Yes, ma'am. Excuse me. You heard Ms. Tate reference the Stanton Augusta Waynesboro MPO. This is a federally mandated and federally funded transportation policymaking organization comprised, pardon me, of state and local representatives. The MPO is staffed by the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission. Waynesboro and each other member locality is represented by an elected official and a staff member to the policymaking board. Given Mr. Henderson's no longer on council, no longer able to represent the city at the MPO, the council has asked this evening to identify and vote a elected official to represent us at the MPO.
Okay. Right. Well, do I have a motion to appoint a member?
I'll make that motion to...
I'll make that motion to appoint Mr. Wood to the Stanton Augusta Waynesboro MPO.
Thank you, Mr. Short. And do I have a second?
No second.
And thank you, Mr. Lee. Any discussion? All in favor of appointing Mr. Wood to the SAAL MPO, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes four to zero. Thank you for serving on the SAAL MPO.
Yes.
Okay. Item 12 is communications, correspondence, and calendar. Mr. Hamp?
I don't have anything this evening.
Okay. And that brings us to item three, citizens' comment period. I would like to remind speakers of the four-minute time limit. The light will turn red once your time is up, and just please remember to state your name and your address for our records. And the stoplight is up here, and once that turns red, your time is up. And Mr. Hamp?
Cheryl Carey.
Hello. My name's Cheryl Carey. I live at 820 Fairway Drive. Hello. I just have a couple things that I want to talk about is red lights. People are blowing through red lights, hard red lights constantly, and it's a real problem. I know we're short of police officers, but I think the safety is really happening. People are hesitating when the light turns green. Whenever I go out, I see someone blow through a red light. Saw two today. I'm not someone who really likes cameras, but I, and I know the cost, but I'd rather have cameras up there catching people speeding, going through red lights, and then someone getting hurt, because people have been hurt by it. So I'd like you to think about doing something about people going through red lights, getting cameras. Even if we couldn't make money getting the cameras, it would make everyone safer, because this town is getting crazy with people just driving through them. My other thing is, a lot of kids, three neighbors in my neighborhood have children who have electric hoverboards, electric bikes. They don't obey the signs. They go in the wrong directions. Some of them have, like, go-kart-looking electric ones. I and several of my neighbors have almost hit them. Neighbor whose child has it has said, "It's our fault. We're supposed to look out for the child." And of course, we are looking, and that's why we slam on the brakes. The child is this far to the ground. I don't think there's any current laws talking about electric bikes for kids, and it's becoming a problem. There are skateboards, hoverboards, low to the ground, and parents just seem to let them go all over. So I think there has to be some type of rule, something coming out, to make them safe and to make us as drivers safe, that when I come up a hill, I'm not all of a sudden see a child low to the ground coming towards me. And that has happened many times. My one last thing is, I wanted to know, do we have any illegal immigrants in our city? And if so, I think we should all know about it. And if we don't, I think if we do have some brought to our city, that we should, the citizens should know about it. And I wonder if you have a plan as to how to deal with it, if we do get any illegal immigrants into our city. I don't want to end up like cities I see on the news where they're in the streets. They're taking up a lot of our money, where we don't even have enough money to care for the homeless people who are Waynesboro citizens. I don't want us to be taking care of people who are illegal. So I hope we have a backup plan. I hope if we have illegals here, you let us as citizens know and where our money is going. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Connie Wright-Zink.
I'm Connie Wright-Zink. Some of you may know me already. I am not a resident of Waynesboro, but I am a member of Virginia Organizing with the Waynesboro chapter. I was glad to know that you all went to the, or some of you went to the Saturday vigil. We also had one on Sunday for affordable housing and the fact that our governor is not putting any money towards where his concerns are supposed to be, he says, for housing costs. But tonight, in an attempt to continue to keep the council's awareness of the situations that are going on with our homeless and our people who are struggling to survive, we've brought our friend Laura in tonight, who is here just out of the hospital for a week, and she was in a coma for a week. But she felt so strongly that she wanted someone to hear her story that she came tonight. She lives in HUD subsidized housing in Waynesboro. She's lived there for quite a while, and the conditions in her unit, as well as some of the neighboring units, are particularly dire. We had coffee with her before we came here and saw a photograph of a hole in her floor that was as big as this podium, which she asked for two years to get fixed until the floor collapsed and she fell in. Now, I understand that the City Council does not have complete control over what HUD does, but this is just another example of the kinds of housing problems that are going on in the city that people like Laura can't control, and they're not getting help. The city inspectors came and went and came and went. It's not been a very good situation for her. She makes $800 a month, but her rent has been assessed at $900 a month. And the powers that run the apartment complex have refused to reassess that. Now, I don't know, I'm terrible at math, but I'm here to tell you that if you make $800 and your rent is $900, and what is it supposed to be for, a percentage of your income has to go to rent? What about food? What about medical issues? What about a car? This isn't livable. We can't allow our citizens to live like this. The city has to be aware of the crisis that we're having in housing, and they have to do what they can to address that and make sure that the renters are not being taken advantage of. We, at the vigil on Sunday, we heard several stories by clergy, by members of the NAACP, of professional counselors, therapeutic psychologists.
Thank you so much. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Andrea Jackson.
My name's Andrea Jackson, and I reside in Ward A. I was born and raised there. I was going to talk about being positive and, you know, kind of focusing on, like, I know y'all are about to take y'all's retreat on February to try to focus on what you're going to focus on for the upcoming year, and I'm still going to talk about that, but a lot of things were said, and like Connie said, we was at the vigil, and I'm very glad that everybody could go to the vigil at the YMCA, which is needed, because hate is hate, and hate should not be tolerated, or in Waynesboro, period, no matter what it is about. So with that being said, I had some problems with what was said today, and that had nothing to do with what I was going to say. A lot of people who profess to have a belief in God, or even to be Christians, I'm not here to judge anyone, but no one is an illegal person. No one is an illegal person. Now, because you have decided to address me, I'll address.
Okay, address council, please, or me?
Well, I'll address to you is that an issue with undocumented people, I'm not at all going to say that that's not an issue, because it is. But the way in which to deal with that is to call your congressman and to ask them to deal with comprehensive immigration reform, which you're not going to do, because you just said, when you're talking about hate and division, that's a thing that's very divisive. Because a human being is a human being, and a lot of people, a lot of us, profess to be Christians, profess, you know, to not want to be divisive. This is a very divisive situation. Now, I don't think that that's the issue that's going on in Waynesboro, but there's a lot of issues that are going on. So then let me let you know about that, just like we said, the housing. And now we just had this planning commission, and I like the development that's what's going on in Waynesboro. But what I wanted to say and bring forth is, when y'all go on the retreat, it has to be a compromise. It has to be a balance, because now, I've lived, I've been here, most of the people who've been on the board, you know what I'm saying, is not born and raised. You know, now we got some that are. And Waynesboro is changing, and that's good for the better. But then also, Waynesboro is changing. It's going to be a town where it's have and have-nots, because we had all these developments, all of these, you know, divisions, but we also haven't put the cost on these houses that aren't affordable, that is not for people who live in Waynesboro proper. And just, you know, we have to take care of the people who are moving here, but also take care of the people who are working in this town, that are essential and who are in hospitality and service, who are just making bears meat. They can't make their rent, they can't, everybody deserves a decent life. And if you come here and you want to work, we should be able to provide people with that. And I got a problem.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. And please just, people have a heart.
No one else has signed up?
No one else has signed up? Okay. Then we move on to item 14, which is a closed session, and do I have a motion to enter into closed session?
Madam Mayor, I move this meeting be recessed, and the City Council of Waynesboro immediately reconvene in a closed meeting in order to discuss of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including the discussion of the terms or scope of such contract, where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the city's bargaining position or negotiating strategy. As authorized by Section 2.2-3711A29 of the Virginia Code, the subject matter of the meeting is the purchase by the city of an office building for city use.
Okay. Thank you for that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Short, and this requires a roll call vote. Ms. Bordel?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Councilman Short?
Aye.
Councilman Lee?
Aye.
Okay. We are in closed session.[1441.24]
See you, lady.
They're not, they're not up to see.
Okay. Okay. We're back from closed session. Do I have a motion to return from closed session?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I'm gonna need you to read.
You don't need to read. You need this. Where am I reading from?
Read this one.
Oh.
Um, is it the right?
Nope, that's the one to go away. All right. That's the resolution. Where am I at? All right, okay, I see. Madam Mayor, move to adopt the following resolution. Whereas the City Council of Waynesboro has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this City Council that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Waynesboro hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies and two, only such business matters were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of Waynesboro.
And do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Short, and this requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Ms. Wood.
Aye.
Ms. Short.
Aye.
Ms. Millie.
Aye.
Okay, we are back in session. And that leaves us for a motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion since Bruce couldn't be here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wood, and a second?
A second.
Okay, and Mr. Short seconded, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Good.